All right, folks, we are ready to get started here. I want to welcome everyone this evening, and I'll call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mary, roll call.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Cuskinsky.
Here.
Coburn.
Okay. First, we have our scheduled business is under communication, and we have a report from the Lynn County Expo, and Greg and Roger, looks like, are coming up.
Madam Mayor, council members, for the record, Roger Nyquist, Chair of the Lynn County Board of Commissioners and an Albany resident. And while I do it before I go any further, as a lifelong Albany resident, I want to thank you all for your service. I've lived here my whole life, a lot of you have been here a long time, not always agreed on everything, every decision you make, but you're great television for me on Wednesday night. In all seriousness, this is not an easy job you sign up for, and thank you for that. I'm here tonight to introduce Greg and give a little bit of background on where we are with the Fair and Expo and marketing. I've been a county commissioner 15 years now, and from day one, my charge to whoever the marketing person was at the facility was, go make some sales calls, get out of the office, go make some sales calls, book big events, and come back. And I really didn't get much engagement, they didn't really respond to me. I also don't think they went out and made any cold calls and brought back many big events. And so, we're lucky to have someone of Greg's background and experience onboard, and so I made that same little one-minute speech, go book some business, go generate some revenue, and I knew this would be different because Greg said, okay, who would you like me to call on, and what is it you would like me to book? And I didn't have an answer to that. So, I just don't know, go do whatever, and whatever, what we've learned, needs to be better defined. What specifically is our target market? Who is it we need to call on? What are our strengths and weaknesses? One of the things we've learned is, we don't have many dates available for a five-day show, which is what we would call a big event, that would bring hundreds, if not thousands, of people to the community. We have lots of local events that occupy a small portion of the facility, that's booked a couple of years out. I think we maybe have 10 weekends a year that would be for sale, free and clear, if that, and I'll let Greg talk more to that. And so, one of the things that Greg and Randy, working together, identified for us is that we needed some ability for these community events and facilities, many of them local taxpayers who helped build the facility, that we could accommodate, and yet have a big event the same four- or five-day period. Thus, our offer to you for the National Guard facility, right next door, and I've been watching you on TV, and I know you've been talking a bit about that, and so, that's what we would envision with that facility. And so, we're setting ourselves up to get some of those big events, and doing it in a way that doesn't completely displace people in the community who've had ongoing events there for years. So, and we've done that, and also taking a look at what's happening in other facilities, who we are, what's our target market, and again, Greg will talk more about that. One of the other things we've identified, that I've talked with Kate about it, I don't know that it's risen to the level of the council yet, but we've got a sign, or we don't have a sign, somebody has a small reader board out there on the airport property, there are 100,000 cars a day that go up and down I-5, and we could better utilize that space and that opportunity, and we're interested in doing something jointly with you, if there's any interest in doing that. I think today, it's owned and operated by one or both of the motels, and it just-
Same owner.
We're kind of missing it there. If you go south, Douglas County has something, I don't know how ODOT was ever okay with it, but maybe they put it up and ask for forgiveness afterwards, but I don't know if you've seen the sign I'm talking about as you go through there, but we could do something like that jointly and drive all kinds of traffic, not just for the Fair Expo, but river rhythms, or any kind of community event going on. So, I would just close by saying, Greg has been a great addition, he's asked lots of questions that someone with his background and expertise would ask, that when you're doing stuff day-to-day, you're not always looking at with a clean set of eyes. He makes us smarter, we're operating better, we've got lots of questions and lots of potential ways to go, going forward, but at this point, I would declare what we've done to be successful, and thank you for your participation in that. With that, I-
I'm going to stretch. Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it, appreciate the opportunity to be here with the council mayor. We have covered a lot since the last presentation, which I think was on June 24th, most of you were here at that session, and I want to briefly, and emphasize briefly, give you an update, and I will be giving to Maryland or to staff, the deck that they can then send out, and you can include it in the minutes. And I want to emphasize again, it's going to be very brief, because Kate said we had maximum of 15 minutes, and that was before Roger was going to be here, so I'm down to about seven minutes. Thank you, Commissioner. But bottom line, the contract that we signed with the Marion, I lived and sat in for 12 years, the contract we signed with Lynn County Board of Commissioners on May 19th was focused on this primary goal, that's to increase net revenue at the Expo Center. And the primary focus was on getting new customer events, was on generating multiple-day events, when there was space available, and creating more business for hotels, for restaurants, and other businesses here in the Albany area. So, in terms of what we've been doing over the last seven months, seven months and three days, we have done a discovery phase of assessing what is, we've taken a hard look at the competition, because we're not in this alone, there are a lot of local competitors to state, regional, national, and global competitors, that we're going to be bumping heads with, in fact, we already are. We've taken time to define targets, in terms of who are our audiences, what are our goals, and then putting some plans together, and we've started to execute them to achieve the objectives. So, quickly, looking back, the facility in its current location, as all of you, or most of you know, was built in June, and opened in June of 1997. We've taken time in interacting with a number of the groups to find out what people like about the facility, what they don't like, what they would like to see included, we've taken a look, especially outside of Lynn County, what's the level of awareness with the Expo Center? Many people don't know it exists, even though they're, to contradict the Commissioner, there are about 50,000, 55,000 vehicles, according to ODOT, you must have better math.
Well, each way, it's 100. It's 100. I'm an elected official, I can say that.
Okay, yes, sir. Anyway, there are a lot of vehicles that go north and south on I-5, but most people don't know it's there. You have the airport, there is the sign that has the Hawaiian Express, has the comfort suites, has the reader board area, has the airport, at the very bottom, it lists the Expo Center. If you're traveling 65, 70 miles an hour, you're not going to see it, and the reader board presently isn't used. So, there are a number of things, in terms of awareness, that we've identified, some of the challenges, we've looked at how the facility is positioned, how it's branded, how it's marketed, how they've been selling internal and external sales, we've taken a hard look at the competitors, we've visited over 10 different facilities, from Deschutes to Douglas, to Lane, to the State Fairgrounds, up to Portland, to the Metro Expo Center, looking at what do they offer, what's unique about them, what's their pricing like, who are their audiences, and how can we maybe compete more successfully with them. We've looked at our SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and looked at that from a variety of vantage points. What's unique about the Expo Center? From my vantage point, probably the singular biggest uniqueness is its location. There is no other facility in Oregon, except for the Oregon Convention Center, but to get there, you have to really kind of jury-manner to get there, and the Expo Center in Portland, both of those require more effort. We are right there on the freeway, and it makes it very easy, especially, I lived in Portland for many years, the traffic up there, as you know, is a nightmare, and for groups, for people who are coming from around the state, from around the region, who don't want to fight the mess up there, we are uniquely positioned. We've taken a look at what groups are looking for, in terms of, this is based on some national data, what kind of characteristics and features they're looking for, and finally, we've looked at pricing. So, in terms of what was, from January 1 of 2010, through the signing of our contract with the county, Lynn County, excuse me, in that period, there were 391 different groups who held over 1,700 events at the Expo Center, those are distinct events, and you can drill down and see there, almost 400 were horse-related, 275-ish were banquet types, 200 meetings, and 100-plus dog shows. So, that's the history, if you will, in terms of who's been using the Expo Center over the last five, five-and-a-half years. As of September 14, 2015, through 12/31/20, so looking out several years, we have 124 distinct groups that have already planned 562 different kinds of events. Now, it's interesting, at least from my background, when you look, and I grew up in Albany, left here in 1970, as Bill, we were just talking about, the old days, when you think of the Expo Center, and you think about filling it, and trying to book contracts, and get all these groups to come there, that's wonderful, but who's the competition? And you look at this chart, and this is just kind of a graphic, if you will, that I put together to illustrate that from local to global, there are public, private, and nonprofit entities that have venues, in all sorts of categories, including universities, you name it, the list is very extensive, we're bumping heads with all of them, or most of them, for the non-local business. If it's a local group, like the Kiwanis, or somebody who wants to hold an event out at the Expo Center, that's great, people aren't going to drive up to Portland or Seattle for that. But if we're going after a national horse show, or some other kind of a national or regional event, or international event, we're bumping heads with lots of other folks. And then even locally, you look into Albany, people have choices, and that's great, we're in free enterprise, so there are public facilities, like the city has with the senior center, you have the colleges, notably LB, and the schools, you have a variety of other entities like churches, and then lots of profit, private entities that have facilities, they're all competing for events that will fit within their, besides the capacity of their space. So, based on all of that, this assessment and discovery phase, we really started zeroing in on playing to our strengths, defining a strategy, and I'll get into that a little bit in a second, concentrating on target audiences, and you can read through the list here, but focusing our efforts for success, long-term, not just look for the onesie-twosie successes, but look at how can we position ourselves for groups that will start coming here on a regular basis over a period of years. Target audiences, based on the history and the success, because of the unique facilities we have here, you're not going to have, at the Oregon Convention Center, you're not going to have a bunch of horses, it's possible, but we're uniquely situated with the facilities, where with the different animal groups, we can target them, there are lots of trade groups, especially those in the ag space, and forestry, and contractors, different professional associations, lots and lots of franchise businesses, that may have 1,000 to 1,500 franchisees nationally, that we're going after them, to see if they would like to have different events here at the Expo Center. Obviously, government has a big player, so we've reached out to a number of different state and federal agencies and departments, like the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, and there are also event promoters, firms and individuals, whose sole job in life is to help a client achieve their objectives, and to find a facility. So, we reached out to some from regional, some national groups, that are involved in producing events. One of our firm beliefs is that this isn't one person, or two of us, this is, it takes the whole community, in fact, it takes the whole county, to spell success, and I teasingly said at the presentation in June, to the mayor and to the city manager, although he's retiring, so it'd probably be his replacement, that, for example, the Mayor's Association of Oregon, there are lots of different groups that we could reach out to, and we've received good support from a variety of individuals, Councilman Kellum has been very supportive, for example, in getting us to speak to Kiwanis, we've had, we've been to the Albany Visitors Association, we've been to a number of other groups, who are open to helping us with getting the message out, if you will. I'm going as fast as I can. Accomplishments, there are many, more are qualitative than quantitative, but to me, even though I lived here for 12 years as a kid, but left in '70, to come back as a gray-haired person in 2015, a lot of things have happened, a lot of the players have changed. So, part of my approach is to reach out to people, anybody and everybody who has an idea, who has a request, who has a concern, who has a suggestion, so I've talked to lots of people, been to a lot of different events, have learned more and more about what's happening, to be heard about this community and this county, as mentioned, have visited the different competing venues, we have identified, and I'll go into a little more detail in just a second, a number of improvements that we believe, and this is we, as in the staff at the Expo Center, it's we, and that we had a couple of events where we had people from the hotels, Peggy was here from the Albany Visitors Association, Jimmy was there from, sorry, I'm confused, from the Albany Downtown Association, Jimmy from the Albany Visitors Association, all these acronyms, but we had a number of people come and give their candid opinions about what could be done to improve the facilities, and to make them more attractive to groups that have come to the area. The hotels have been great, and I don't want to single out any individual hotel, but the sales folks, the marketing people for the hotels in Albany, have been very, very helpful, given us some leads, and doing some other things to help us in pursuing opportunities for the Expo Center. What else? Terms of strategy, three points, focus on our strikes, and we do have some, zero in the target audiences, we don't want to go out after every entity that's out there, that's going to be spinning our wheels, wasting our time, and those groups that have a history of coming here, or have the potential of coming here because of the unique nature of this community, this county, we're going after them. And again, engaging others. We also think there are a lot of potential partners who could benefit from this, and so we've been reaching out to them, we've zeroed in on the audiences, as mentioned, we've developed a sales plan, to date, we've reached out to over 260 different entities, those are state, regional, and national, couple international groups, we've bid on a couple of different events, we weren't successful. For example, in one case, their requirement was, they needed a hotel on property with over 200 hotel rooms. I said, hey, we've got 150-some at the two right next door, we have 683 rooms within 1.5 miles, not good enough, our requirement is 200 onsite. A couple of them have said, we need an airport, an international airport within 15 to 20 miles of the property. So, well, unless the city council decides to expand the municipal airport, that's not going to happen here in Albany, so we've gone after, also dates, there've been a couple of situations where we didn't have dates available for the groups. In terms of marketing, branding, website, a variety of other things we've done, in terms of helping the Expo Center be better positioned to serve potential groups. Specifically, one of the things that Kate Porsche requested was an update on facility needs. We took a very, I think, aggressive, objective, and comprehensive look at that with staff, but also independent of staff, again, we involved some other people in that, with ADA, AV, and others. We presented a list of capital, maintenance, and operational items, and I should count them up, but there's probably 350 different items on that list. At the request of Commissioner Nyquist, Randy Porter, the manager of the Expo Center, presented back in December, a five-year plan with itemized items per year, where the commission has-
Committed $100,000 a year of lottery dollars for improvements.
Excellent.
For five years, so half a million dollars over five years.
And when we committed it, it was enough money, but he's spouted out the $350,000 with the projects in the last month, so we've got a plan for that, too.
One of the things we've recommended is that we create a facilities master plan, looking out five to 30 years out, most of our competitors, whether it's the state fair, which needs some work, you look at Deschutes County, you look at a variety of facilities around the state and the region, they all have game plans of what they're going to do to raise the bar, we can't be static, we need to look away, so we're talking about what we can do with that. We're on the home stretch. Why do we want to do that? We have to be more attractive, and more competitive, especially where we're away from Portland, we're away from Eugene, Seattle, San Francisco, we have to have facilities that will be a why, that will convince people they need to come here. The other thing is that we've got to play to our strengths, we have a wonderful community, we have a great county, there are many assets, including the people, and there's so many recreational opportunities up the canyon and other places, that aren't available in downtown Portland, or Seattle. So, there's some things that we need to do, I think, to enhance the facility, it's a good facility now, but it needs some polishing, and some things done to make it better. Finally, beyond going after groups, and when Commissioner Nyquist, when we had our initial conversations, and decision was made, I asked if we were limited to only focusing on bringing in events, that is the primary focus, we get that. However, if you're looking at the goal, which is to bring in additional revenue, non-tax, non-general fund revenue, so we've, the facility, for example, last year, the Expo Center received a little over $5,000 in sponsorship revenue. There are other venues in this state, or in southwest Washington, where they receive anywhere from 100 to up to $500,000 a year in non-county fair, in non-tax revenue, to support the operation, marketing, and other activities of the venue. We believe that that can become a nice complement to the existing efforts, and so, we're working on a plan and a policy that staff will present to the commission sometime here in the near future. There are a variety of other partners out there, that we believe that we could also work with closely, we also want, we're looking at the facility and the rental rates, and looking at what other services could be offered that might provide, again, some additional revenue. And finally, nothing new, but we believe that there's an opportunity, if there were some kind of a foundation, a vehicle, that could receive funds, that could be dedicated for the Expo Center, it could be a farmer, it could be whomever it is, who wants to bequeath, who wants to provide some funds, it could be, we go after some grants, from the Oregon Community Foundation or others, that could be used for purposes at the Expo Center. In summary, I get that the primary objective of this council and of the commission is to bring new groups, to bring new events to the Expo Center, but I think we need to look at the big picture in the long run, to ensure that we have a good product to offer, and that it's one that will meet the needs and the objectives and the interests of the people who want to come here. With that, thank you for this opportunity, and I think we're both prepared to answer any questions.
Questions, Jeff, Rich?
I guess, from my perspective, the focus from this body is not so much to get new groups, as it is to get groups to stay here multiple days, so that we can reach in their pocket, and take money, and give them stuff. I mean, that's, after all, you know, that's really what it's about. It is the marketing of Albany, and having them stay multiple nights markets Albany.
So, when I became a commissioner in 2000, I quickly learned, and I was pretty naive about it, that there was, that there were goals that weren't necessarily one and the same. And an example would be that we had a chance to book a dog show, that would have been four or five nights, and the rent, the payment to the county would have been like 20, or to the Fair Expo would have been like $26,000, $27,000. We had two longstanding events that have been there for years, that are local events, that we would have had to kick out, and the revenue wasn't a lot different to us, and so, do you hold that event, do you be loyal to the people you know are going to come back to every year, or do you book an event that's for five days, that gives you an uptick for one year, that's a more regional event? So, but you would have us kick the locals out, and bring, I mean, purely, if you talk about your direction and your motive, would bring in that big event just for that five-day period. And so, with the acquisition of the other facility, if we can work our way through getting the National Guard relocated, that will ease that conflict a bit, and help us, we'll be better positioned to do that. But I don't, you know, I remember that Councilman, and then Merrick Kellum, was just, had to be tied over trying to get the Visitors Association and the staff at the Fair Expo to work together. They're supposed to be marketing this place, and while they didn't have exactly the same charge, and they still don't today, and so, we'll just have to continue to work through those issues, one at a time, and try to best position ourselves, so we can do the kind of thing you're talking about. There's a balance there.
Well, I did not mean to say that we should kick out the gun show that's here every time, I mean, it is, it is, on average, one is a better thing than the other, and you have to look at the longer term to do that, but, I mean, focusing down the road, you know, that's the goal.
Kudos to you for coming up with some excellent, long-range planning, and it needs to be done, there's no question about that. From your perspective, and your expertise, when do you see this actually starting to gel, so it actually starts generating additional revenue, then, for the fairgrounds in the county?
Well, I would just say that it's already started. Revenue is up, sales are up a bit, now, I haven't deciphered the relationship between that and the heads and beds issue, but for example, based on Greg's coaching and input, we scheduled the County Fairs Association is moving from Salem to our facility, they'll start meeting annually in October. That's just one example, I don't have the book in front of me, but I would submit to you, we're already starting to see results. What we haven't seen yet are these events scheduled years out, that are hundreds, if not thousands, of people booking for a five-day period, writing the Fair Expo a $40,000 to $50,000 check, and filling up every motel within 70 miles.
Quick response, credit to Randy Porter and the staff, for example, Motheress News, they had their event here this last year, they've signed up coming, that's big, they only have, I think, four regional events around the country, for them to renew, to come back, is huge, and the word spreads, for example, with their kind of associates, if you will. Generally, we're going after the big groups, the national-type groups, even regional groups, they're booking minimum of two years, but sometimes five years out. And so, first of all, we've got to get on the radar, if they've never heard of Albany, they've never heard of the Expo Center, we've got to at least get on their radar, and then it's a matter of trying to navigate through the landmines, and each group is different, whether it's a staff decision, whether it's a volunteer decision, everybody has different decision-making processes, and so, it's not quick and easy. I mean, frankly, I'd hope, I mean, I've got a couple of friends that say, geez, why don't you just go out and book weddings? I said, that doesn't meet the criteria. Those are not, those are local events, those are not outside the area, generally, they're probably at most one night, I can't do that. Well, go after the existing groups, I can't do that, that's part of our agreement, is I'll go after new stuff. And so, it's, at face value, it sounds easy. I'd love to say we had 10 booked events of, you know, 30,000 people each, I'd be ecstatic. I think the commissioner would be quite pleased to, we don't have it. We're going to get there, but I'm a little hesitant to say that by June 30, 2016, we'll have five groups that have 25,000 people each. That's unrealistic, because most of those groups who are planning for, no, they're looking down the road, two or three years, we're going to get there, but it takes time, we're planting lots of seeds, we're going, we've built, the foundation was there, we've enhanced it, we're enhancing it, and together, we're going to get there.
Questions?
Sure. I guess, last year and a half, from my perspective, I think they've done a great job, because they now have, they know what they have, they have a futuristic focus, they know what they have to do to make that place competitive, and they know what they have to do to keep it competitive into the future. I think that's further along than we were a year and a half ago. And I think those types of things, it's almost, if you look at a curve, you've got to make a lot of work and a lot of investment early, but you don't see the return until it's two or three years down the road, or maybe five years down the road. But unless you take those first steps, you'll never get on that upswing of the curve, so I compliment the county and you, Greg, for doing that.
Full credit, and that is that we, as Commissioner Nyquist knows, we have gone out, and we've done some scheduled appointments, we've also done some mystery visits to these other venues, number one. Number two, we reached out, one of the big questions that we've talked about internally is, should- is, should we self-produce events? Should we go out and find XYZ activity, and then we put the energy into doing that? There are some facilities who do, many who don't. So we contacted about 10 facilities, and it's a real mixed bag, most don't, because it doesn't pencil out. It takes also probably a minimum of two, but more like three, four, or five years to get the kind of activity and the revenue from those activities. But to the credit of about 10 facilities around the state, now, I'll mention Deschutes County, Dan over there has been Yowen, he took me on a tour, it's phenomenal, and he has responded to the questions about self-producing, he said, don't do it. You're going to go down a rat hole. Don't do it. Secondly, followed up about, with about 10 facilities about sponsorships, and they've been very generous in sharing information, public information, about what they're doing and some of the pros and cons. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to do what's unique for this community and for this county, but to learn from the experiences of other venues in the region. And so, we may be competitors, but we're also collaborating, because what's good for the state is good for the state.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for watching TV, Roger.
Yes.
Well, just a quick, do you have that, this is a PowerPoint that you could email to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the University of Oregon Sustainable City Year Program. And, yes. Hi, good evening.
Hello, and thank you for having us here, mayor and council. My name's Nico Larko, I'm a professor at the University of Oregon, and I'm co-director of the Sustainable Cities Initiative there, and I've got with me today Courtney Griesel from the city of Springfield, which is a city that we worked with recently, and Megan Banks, who's the city manager, or the program manager for the Sustainable City Year Program, which is what I'm here to talk to you about today. I think you had a little bit of a presentation about this at your last session, and thank you for giving us the time to come and talk a little bit more about how the program works and what it is. What I wanted to do today is talk a little bit about how the program works, why it exists, what kind of the benefits are to cities, and these are not imagined benefits, we've had years of work with cities around the state in doing this, and so we'd like to talk about some specifics of that. And then let Courtney talk about some of the experiences that her city had in working with the Sustainable City Year Program, and then, of course, answer your questions. The basic idea of the way the program works is, we have universities that have tremendous amount of work that's happening there, knowledge, it's our business to know best practices around the country and around the world. Oftentimes, students are doing hypothetical projects, which, you know, I grade and no one ever looks at, not even the students. And at the same, so we've got all this potential here, and then at the same time, we've got cities around Oregon who are in need of some of this capacity, some of these ideas, and some of this energy. And our basic idea, you know, many years ago, was why don't we put these two things together? Wouldn't it make sense to have, put students in the service of cities, being able to help with some of the work that's happening there, and at the same time, students get this fantastic experience of what, how to become effective professionals when they get out of the university? So what we're really trying to do is to leverage the university in, to the needs of the city. What we've done every year that we've worked with cities is, we're working on real-world projects that the city is taking on that year. This is, so to be clear, and many of you might have had experiences like this in university or children have experienced like this, where they might work for the city, and sometimes it feels a little bit more like philanthropy, where the city's helping a little bit of how students can learn. This is not that model. We're absolutely committed to value-add all the way across the board, and working on, as I said, on projects that the city is already working on, this is not imaginary projects, real projects with real tangible outcomes and deliverables that we're giving the city to move the city forward in their goals. I think you might have heard a little bit about this before, but generally, we have about 20 projects when we work with the city, somewhere between 20 and 30. It's about 500 students that are going to be working within the city. That translates to about 40,000 to 60,000 hours of work that's coming to the city through these students, faculty, and staff. It's a tremendous amount, now, these are not consultant hours, these are student hours, so you can't quite equate them, but it's a tremendous amount of capacity that comes to the city, and we work across a range of disciplines, architecture, landscape architecture, planning, the kind of more built environment, but also law, business, journalism, arts administration, geography, it's really across the board. Some of the benefits that cities have had working with us, and I hope, I think you had two things that were passed out to you, one of them has quotes from people that we've worked with in the past, mayors, councilors, staff, and what they've said about the program after working with us per year. And I hope that you can take a look at that and get a sense of this. But some of the benefits are, on the one hand, is simply just increased capacity, the amount of work that can go into these projects, these projects that staff would be working on, or staff would be looking for assistance on. You get to leverage the entire weight of the university and kind of the effort of students to work on these things. We bring best practices, as I said, it's part of what we do in a university, and we're teaching students to become professionals. We also get to expand the conversation, so whereas a consultant might really be trying to get to one answer really quickly, for us, as part of the teaching, we want to look at a number of different options that might be feasible and help push the city forward. So it really gives the opportunity for the city to look at a range of options of what might happen, and really think outside the box. And we've heard this over and over again from mayors, councilors, and city staff that have worked on these projects, that that's one of the benefits. Because we take this kind of broader approach, we can test out riskier solutions, so things that would be difficult for the city to take on without some more investigation. Sometimes the investigation is a risk in itself, because we're working at a broad scale, we're looking at a lot of different options, and we have the opportunity to do that, and let the city, be that the staff, be that the residents, evaluate how that, what those opportunities might be. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity for outreach in these, in the Sustainable City Year, where oftentimes in the paper, we usually do a communications plan before the, this, the year starts. We're working with community members all throughout the year, staff, councilors, electeds. And so there's a huge opportunity to get the message of the projects that are happening, a great chance to get engagement. We've heard from many mayors, actually, telling us that, you know, we're getting people coming to meetings that we never used to get, come to meetings, not just for the project, but that's persisted out beyond the project, and oftentimes in communities that are, have been more marginalized or have not engaged as much with the city. We've done a lot of work with Latino and Slava communities throughout the state. There's increased efficiencies that we really focus on, based on bringing best practices to staff, staff that maybe has sometimes been, I'm sure it's not here, but in other cities that we're working in, they've been a little ground down, or are looking for new ways of doing things. This is a great opportunity to kind of energize staff, get them excited about the work they're doing. There's nothing, we've heard from a number of city staff saying, there's nothing like having, you know, 25 students about to show up tomorrow, and ask me a bunch of questions about this thing, to really get things, get people thinking a little bit differently about the work that they're doing on a day-to-day basis. We move projects forward, and so, and actually, a phrase Courtney came up with once, was the pesky perennial problems. These are projects that either because of, just haven't gotten the attention that they need, or we haven't gotten the coordination across the city, it's, this is a great opportunity to get projects unstuck, to shed a little light and give capacity to those projects so that you can get them going again, and we're going to talk about some of those things. Yeah, so, to give you some idea of some of the projects, I'm going to talk about two, and then Courtney's going to talk about a couple of them. You have, within here, you have a list of projects, and we, as I said, we do a whole bunch of projects in any given year, and so this is just a small sample of kind of some of the outcomes that we've got from some of these projects. And I believe it's being passed around, some of the covers, all the covers of the reports that we do at the end of each project. But, so one of the projects that I'll mention is a project that we actually did in Salem a few years back, who was one of our partners, and it's a course on industrial ecology, which was looking at, they were interested in it for an economic development reason, looking at how the outputs from one business could be the inputs of another business, right? So someone's waste could be someone else's raw material. And so students in the business school did an inventory of inputs and outputs around the region, and ended up coming up with business plans. I think there was six or seven business plans that came out of that class. One of the business plans talked about using some excess capacity in anaerobic digester they had, instead of shipping stuff up to Portland, you could do it locally. The city actually looked at that plan, tested it, as soon as we were done with it, to see if it was feasible, implemented it, and is, has a revenue of $1 million a year recurring based on that work, based on that student work to get that. They didn't know that that opportunity existed. This is a great example of students thinking outside the box and broadening expectation. That's $1 million recurring. Another project, which is just happening right now, and this is just to show you how quick the turnaround can be, we're working with the city of Redmond, and in the spring last year, we did a class with them, looking at their bicycle infrastructure plan, and students looked at kind of the situation across the board of how, what opportunities existed and what was needed. They came up with proposals, and the city is implementing 16 of the 18 proposals that came, they're being built, like, they're either being built or in plans to be built right now. And we were actually at the Oregon League of Cities with Redmond's staff, and giving a presentation about this work, and someone asked, is this worthwhile? Is there value to this thing? And Heather Richards, kind of one of the project leads over there, said, we have been working for seven years to try to have something happen with bike infrastructure, and it can be different for different cities, what that seven-year thing is, and we got nowhere. And in one term, we were able to move all these projects forward. Yes, absolutely, there's value add here. So with that, I will turn it over to Courtney to talk a little bit about the experience that Springfield had with us.
So they oftentimes invite me to talk, because I'm notorious for being candid and brutally honest at times, and so I'll talk about why we did it, but also, some of the things we struggled with, our council and leadership are incredibly energized and invested in the community, which inspires staff to never say no. And so, we rarely ever say no to a project that the community needs and desires, or that council wants to see us do. And to some extent, what that means is the stacks on the desks get very high, and sometimes the project horizons get very long, and the perspective on opportunity gets really narrow. And we get into this kind of spiral that's tough for staff. And so, we had sort of this list of projects when we first looked at the partnership that had been on a lot of our desks for years and years. I've been with the city for about 10 years, so, not too many years for me, but, and the reality of that was that they were still very important, but we were not getting unstuck. And our way of accomplishing the projects was to really focus in, sometimes on what seemed like just a really clear and straight line to the end. And so, when we started to look at the partnership with the University of Oregon, it was right in the middle of the recession, and we kind of had that decision to make, our budgets are going down, we have all these projects that are out there now only partially funded, we need to keep momentum so that we're ready to respond when the economy turns around. And so, we pulled all of those existing projects that were still really key for us, and we've got, you know, there's really not a better time to test what we think we know, to test what the community is actually open and receptive to, and to see if there's some new innovations out there that we're not thinking about, that can change how we market things, how we combine creative financing. So, two of the projects I'll kind of talk to you about, we, we're in the middle of looking at a library, and it's really hard to talk to your community about a new library if you have to finance it, and you're talking about it in the middle of a recession. So, the conversation we really got to have with that community was, okay, but this is student work, so this is a great time for us to take some time and dream about what we actually need, and think critically about the space, but, you know, it's still student work, so let's have this great community conversation around it. We worked, the university brought in an architect, a visiting architect, to be the professor who specializes in buildings like libraries around the world, who actually then wrote a textbook following our course, and presented us with some beautiful images that they actually were able to engage the community on. It wasn't very threatening for the community to come to the meetings. We had more dialogue about the library facility that was positive than the Library Foundation had gotten in years, as they'd been trying. And quite frankly, the work was brilliant, the library director for once felt like, you know, the prima ballerina ballet dancer on the stage, and it was this great feeling. And several years have gone by, and I will say that the project did move to the side of the desk again for a bit, but then it's public sector, and sometimes our planning horizons do that. What's exciting about it is now that we're starting to see the recovery, and we're starting to see momentum again in investments, we're now moving into an RFP stage to actually do the legitimate schematic design for the facility. And we pulled up the work that we had done with students several years back, and what we realized is, when we've gone out for this initial bid to understand how big of a project it is, what was originally budgeted at about $250,000 to do that first phase schematic design, to then move us into construction documents, right now, we're looking at about a $17,000 to $90,000 contract to complete that step. And we didn't anticipate that the student work would get us that far, but it also didn't take a whole lot of blood, sweat, and tears on our part necessarily, to dream real big with the students to get that list. It's not that the images are exactly what we'll do, it's that we figured out what the community actually wants. One of our other projects that's really important for me, coming from the economic development background, is our communication around how we assess fees with our citizen systems development charges, how we start talking about feasibility of density, or why we plan the way we plan. And we had a moment where we were in the middle of a completely different project, and light bulbs started going off with staff, and they realized that there was a certain skill set with that faculty that could, we could apply to some other projects. We were talking about economics and systems development charges, which is like a snore. And then what we realized was, if we can talk about economics of doing an urban design on a residential road, why can't we talk about economics of urban densities in a new refinement planning area? If we think it should be student housing because of its proximity to the U of O, maybe we can figure out if that's actually economic feasible. Does the market want that? Does it make any sense? And we had been kind of hanging our hat on that idea for like a decade. It's a rut. It's the perfect definition of a rut. And the market feasibility came back, and we actually had some outside consultants on the class as well, and they said, it doesn't pencil. That's the wrong, you're close. It should be market rate. But the design of student housing is wildly different. It doesn't pencil, you're focusing on the wrong place. And so, we pulled back, and it actually gave us permission with our elected officials to say, no, that's not the direction we'll go. We took that off the table, we modified the plan, we moved through the adoption process, and actually, last year, it was nationally awarded an economics, an excellence award in economic planning. So, I think for us, and we're starting to see movement now, finally, on that riverfront area, which is just an absolute relief. What's important about that project for me on a number of topics, being the manager of this project and partnership, we had hurdles with our contracting. We struggled initially to define the relationship that the city and the university would be entering into in a way that would give us authority to be in the partnership, but staff the flexibility to recognize an opportunity to divert a project into a better direction, right? And so, we were talking a lot about systems development charges, which was the original direction with the economics, and we still got a product out of that, which was actually a great one. I love it, because I love economics, but, and I love infrastructure, but I'm a public sector employee, so anyways. But we had this authority to then divert it to ideas about market feasibility of housing. And so, it allowed us to be incredibly responsive in a short amount of time, which in our city is not always normal with contracting procedures. So, that's really kind of why I wanted to make sure I was out there. And any questions you have about our partnership, I'll be incredibly candid about it.
And so, I'll just mention, so, the, I think this was passed out to you as well, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea was that the partnership is about $250,000 for the year. It doesn't all come from one place, and it doesn't come specifically from general fund dollars. And what staff did here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but is listed for you, money that would be spent on these projects, on work that you already want done, it's just that you're directing it to this. So this money's already coming out of areas that have been allocated for this work, which is honestly exactly what we look for when we look for a partner in the city. This is not new, you know, make-believe or imagined thing, this is coming out of work that you want to get done anyway, and you're just leveraging the university. So with that, I'm happy to answer, I know there's, oftentimes, we're fortunate now that we've been doing this for a number of years, and we have a lot of experience with it. The first year that we had to talk to council, we were kind of doing a lot of hand-waving, but we've got a whole lot of experience to talk about, so we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions? Yeah, Bill?
So, when you look at this list, do you see, kind of three, I'm going to ask you kind of three areas. One is things that you've done before, and it's like, yep, this is doable, I know how to do this. Things that you see that you've tried to do that, nope, that wouldn't work, waste of money. Or maybe even some things that are brand-new that, wow, hadn't thought about that, that would be different and unique. You know, Albany's asking us to do something a little different.
So, this is, I'll answer some of that, and this is a condensed list of the larger kind of project list, which I think you were all given that as well. And I'll tell you, having looked at the list, there's some of all those things. There's a whole lot, and we're actually just recently going through all the projects, and there's a whole lot of like, oh, especially we were just looking at it with Courtney, oh yeah, we did something exactly like that. Oh yeah, that, and some of them that, all right, we're going to have to talk about breaking that project down, because that is an enormous project, and it's beyond the scope of what students can do, because we're big believers in, you know, under-promise, over-deliver. That, so, we're going to have to break that out and figure out what component of that we're going to take care of, so that we can make it easier for staff as they go forward. So, yes, there's that whole range of things. And we wouldn't be here today if we didn't think the list that you guys have put together is a great list. I mean-
If you were to ask me, if I were putting, like, these were my projects, and based on some, like, the Resource Center and IT Services Planning, that would be for, that would fit in that category of home run. And what you'll end up getting with that one is a whole lot more, because they'll start talking to you about innovation and changes and, you know, workforce technology. They'll, they just kind of get really excited, and they add five other products to what you ask for. The areas that candidly look like work for staff to some extent is when you get into your buildable lands inventory work and into comprehensive planning, where, you know, the staff is going to have to work right alongside the students to make sure that all of that initial base work is fed with quality data and things that's defensible and-
And we stay upfront to every city that we work with, the work's only going to be as good as the involvement is. And this is, you know, I'm sure similar with many of the consultants you work with, if you were to ask them for something and come back, you know, four months later, and see what they'd come up with, it might not be in the direction that you were hoping for. And so, part of the whole kind of engagement is that we work, you know, side and side with staff, oftentimes with counselors, and definitely with the residents and business community as well on these projects. And that kind of working together all the way through is really, I'd say, one of the strongest products. We have reports at the end, at the end of each project, which, you know, were delivered, and Courtney just talked about how some of those end up getting used, but really, the engagement all the way through is what makes it work.
Okay. Ray?
The, the number of students that you have that are involved in the program is approximately, how many?
About 500, 500 to 600.
About 500, so, and is this comprised from freshmen all the way up through graduate students, or?
Great question, but we don't use freshmen. So, typically, it's a mix between graduate students and upperclassmen. So, it's people who can take on this kind of work.
And I'm going to play devil's advocate with you, so bear with me. It almost seems like you're taking students that need good grounding in some of these processes for future career paths, and you're practicing on other communities, and these folks are coming and going through the process, and hopefully, knock on wood, the end community benefits from their being able to practice, and like you said, it requires a lot of involved staff from each of the communities. Isn't that, and if they're coming in relatively new to the process, doesn't that then take away the time that city staff is already getting paid to do some of the projects?
I'll pass it on to Courtney.
Yeah, so, we see a lot of folks coming in. We were having a hard time with our hiring pool, to be honest. A lot of staff were coming out of university, or a lot of the students, and they hadn't really experienced or touched a real project. And so, I guess, part of it is you rub up against the learning curve somewhere, and there's something to be said. We've now hired some of our Sustainable City Year students. There's something to be said for them coming in and having learned how to address council, how to talk to community members, what's expected of them at a presentation. And so, that's some really basic stuff. But the other element of it is that it's just as good for the 30-year kind of veteran employee to have to go through something they've not been through in a while, which is, well, why? You know, we start to say, "Well, this is how we calculate things." And the student will ask, "Why?" And that doesn't happen as often as it should probably in the professional world. And so, it pushes existing staff to start revisiting the why. And sometimes, what we realize is our assumptions, you know. So, I think as long as you're engaged, it's not necessarily like a guinea pig situation.
And I'll say, it's a very good question. The first time we did this with the city, I sweated a lot, wondering about this, like, will we be able to produce value add? And across the board, with every city we've worked with, and actually, this model has now become a national model with, you know, there's 25 programs around the country and internationally now running this kind of large-scale engagement. Across the board, there is a tremendous feeling of value add. And that's part of the reason that we brought the, kind of, the quotes from the people that we've worked with, that the work that they're getting from students, I don't like to say too much, but we often get the comment, "This is better than the work that we got from the consultants," right? There's a tremendous, even though these are students who are young in their career, they've got the guidance of faculty, which we're working mostly with the professional schools, and there's a, there's this ability to work outside the box, which as Courtney was saying, is part of the benefit of this. It's getting your staff to engage in kind of solutions that might not be your typical solutions. And so, you know, I would point to the, you know, our kind of fantastic showpiece project where the city of Salem, in theory, staff could have figured out that they were going to save a million dollars a year by doing this, but this, having students engage with them and work together to come up with these business plans is where that came out. And so, that kind of value add. And I'd invite you to, you know, any of the cities that we work with, like, please reach out to colleagues there and ask them what the value was.
Yeah, Rich?
Well, along the same line, basically, we're training them. Been in business a few years. When you get someone who really doesn't know what they don't know, the training of them takes an inordinate amount of time to regular people, to your regular employees. Now, that either pays off over time, or it doesn't. I mean, that's one of the reasons that employers have such a rigorous process for hiring, is they don't want to have to do that any more than they absolutely have to. Now, you say there are 500 students. Is this 500 students that there would be a few coming and going in each project? Or are you talking about out of the 500 students, and we picked a one issue, ABC, whatever that was? There would be a cadre of students that, of 50 students that would primarily be doing with that? Or are we talking about dealing with 200 students for that same thing?
So, let me clarify, and I'm sorry that I didn't mention this before. The way it works is that we match an existing course with a project that the city is looking for. So, these are not, and I would have a similar look of fear in my eyes if I was saying that we were just unleashing 500 students and you guys figure out how to make them work. The idea was really that they're existing courses that are, have a structure to them. The professors know what kind of output they can be getting from the students, they know what they need to get through pedagogically. And then, they take on these specific courses. I'm, you know, part of what I said before, the 40,000 to 60,000 hours, that's something that helps you get over the learning curve piece of it. They will not be as efficient, we're talking just about efficiency of working, as your staff guaranteed. They're young, right?
Anyone who doesn't know takes longer. I mean, you have to train them.
But that's why, so, for instance, if you've got a class of 20 people working in an architecture studio, 20, 25 hours a week each, over, you know, 11, 12 weeks on a project, that's a lot of hours of work that are going to that, and there's a, their learning curve, they're eating up in their time that they're spending on this. And again, I would point to, you know, the results that we've gotten from, from the work, for instance, the, you know, the project that was done for the library, that's saving the city somewhere around $110, $130,000 in their schematic design fees, because of the work that happened with the city.
Right. If you're doing a specific project, yeah.
Yeah. And the idea is that, I mean, and this is part of what we develop, I mean, we don't walk into this lightly, because we need success as much as you need success. And so, we are very careful in the scoping of projects. And the list that you have is the first pass at that, right? So, we're going to figure out within those projects, making sure that they're all, the scoping exercise takes a couple of months to figure out that the projects are really finely attuned to what you need and what we can deliver easily. And as Courtney said, we typically deliver well beyond the products that you've asked for.
Second thing came up once before, which was, we kind of have to sign on before we know what's going on. Is that?
Yeah, so, what's typically worked in, that we've done with cities in the past, is that the city council says to staff, "You have the ability to engage with the university, not to exceed this price, and, you know, at points, we can come back, and it can be reviewed by council, this specific project is." I think that's actually a very prudent thing to be doing. But you're more or less giving the staff the flexibility to move forward. As I mentioned before, and this is from, coming from the staff, that the funds that would be used for this, which I'm going to assume is one of the bigger concerns, would be obviously a big concern, is already funds that they have allocated for these projects. It's not new revenue that's being asked for, for the majority of it.
Well, devil's advocate. You're one of my constituents, and I say, "I'm going to spend a quarter of a million dollars." You say, "On what?" And my answer is, "I don't know." I mean, it's going to be some of these things, maybe, or maybe something else. I mean, voters like you and dislike you on the basis of a whole lot of things, and spending their money without knowing what it is, is one that would just absolutely drive some of them bonkers.
See, because we ran into this, and actually, it was difficult for me, and I do the city manager's budget, and I struggle with that. I like to know where every penny's going. So, for us, what it was, was that answer to that question to the public is, it's going to these 16 projects. You know very clearly, so for us, in our contract, we defined very clearly the projects that it would go to. What we didn't define was the specific financial threshold within each project, and we allowed ourselves some flexibility to say, we're going to, you know, we think, we put it in there, we think in this neighborhood, we're going to go after public outreach to start sort of a baseline contact with them. But we built it so that we could also start to talk about the generation of a neighborhood association. We could let it branch if we found after that engagement that they wanted something different. So, we required, if we changed or deviated from that list, that it was an amendment to the contract, and then, we had review points with our council, kind of with every scope on the project. It was a not-to-exceed amount, it didn't, it wasn't a mandatory spend amount, I guess.
And also mentioned to your point, the projects that were, that are part of this list, I mean, that's the direction that we're heading, right? I mean, this is not like, okay, now, what should we do after the, after, if there's approval from council? Those are the projects we're working on. And then, what we're hammering out, not unlike when you go to, you know, to have a contract with a consultant, this is more or less what we're doing, and now, we're going to hammer out the scope. And we won't start any project. In fact, pretty much by midsummer, we have all of our scopes for the coming term completely worked out. And there's specific projects, specific timelines, specific deliverables, and we're happy to share those with you. But, yes, so, I mean, if a constituent was to ask, "What are you working on?", it's a slightly refined list from the list, the longer list that was given to you with the project descriptions. I mean, that is what we work on.
Well, understand our history. Couple of years ago, we went out for a bond for a fire station and a police station, and got it rejected, because it wasn't specific enough. So, therein lies my concern. Anyway, thank you.
Just a quick question, I would dovetail in possibly to our city manager, Wes. Since we're coming up on our budget cycle, annual basis, where do you perceive this money would be coming from, if we did something like this?
I would say it would come from the, if you look at the proposed project list that you have in front of you tonight, there's 203,000 of it. We'd probably do some, you know, we have a much longer list, where there are some other options that we'd be looking at. But this is money that is basically, as we've said, already programmed. It's not like it's, we're saying that if you choose not to go with the University of Oregon, that the money probably won't get spent. And in all likelihood, these, I mean, these are things that we're saying, yeah, we need to do them, and will be in the budget in one form or another.
So, to clarify, this would not be coming out of, say, settlement funds that were set aside for economic development? These are more budgeted items in each of the appropriate departments?
If you look at the funding source in this little matrix that has been presented here, some of it is out of Parks SDC money, some of it is out of Planning Division Contractual Services Budget, which is an annual budget allocation that we give to Planning Division. Some of it's out of Community Development Block Grant, and a Certified Local Government Grant. That's the so-called, quote, entitlement money that we received. You know, it's kind of a new source of money for us as we hit over the 50,000. And then, some of it was out of CARA, which is already in the, in the existing CARA budget. So, these are the kinds of funding sources that you'd be looking at.
Okay. More questions? Okay, something else? All right. Well, thank you so much. Yeah. So, Bill?
Well, I just wanted to mention again that I was in the minority Monday when we discussed this, because I was wholeheartedly in favor of it, and even more so tonight after hearing the presentation. You know, the 40,000 hours, you pencil it, it's $5 an hour. I mean, it's not even minimum wage. One question for Wes, maybe Wes, or Ed, and Bob, looking at a couple of the projects. Is there any concern about the availability of staff to work with these folks? It was mentioned that it's critical that staff have the involvement, if you're looking for the success that they can offer.
No, I think, bear in mind that the list was generated by staff. I mean, when this proposal was first developed, it came to the city's management team, and we sat down, and I, to give you a little history, this came to us several years ago. It's not a new program, and it's been competitive. Their cities have sort of been saying, "Yeah, we want to get on board," and a number of them have. When it first came to me, my first thought was, well, we just don't have the money right now to do this. And this year, you know, we heard the proposal was, came to us again. I looked at the programmed money that was available to us, brought it to the management team, and the management team said, "Yes, we think this is something we want to do, because we have these projects that, you know, we're going to have to do anyway, and this seems like a good and relatively inexpensive way to get it done." And so, I'm assuming, and anybody can contradict me if they want, that the staff would not have proposed them if they didn't feel that they had some time to put into doing it. And again, I think the general reaction from the management team was, "Yeah, this is a good way for us to finally accomplish something that's been on the agenda for a while." Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? What would council like to do with this item?
I obviously would like to proceed with it.
Mm-hmm. Like to proceed forward? Anyone else like to? Because it's actually, it's just a not-to-exceed, and then it'll be working out a specific dollar amount in contract with them. So, it could be less. This is just a not-to-exceed. I mean, seeing a lot of the projects, I think, are very valuable, and also seeing with, you know, Parks and Recreation needs a lot of help, too, on being able to really plan, plan ahead, and see whatever, if they're able to get some additional resources. I could see that being very valuable to them. And plus, we've needed, we've wanted to have the, you know, Monteith Riverfront Refinement Project, too, has been on our list, so... Yeah, Dick?
I guess I'd kind of like to hear from staff, whether they'd appreciate this help, or whether it might be something that they spend a lot of time-
You have Ed?
-working with the kids and pushing them this way, or trying to get them to do that, or whatever.
Kids, in their twenties. Yeah. Well, mid-twenties, but still, they don't have, they have no life experience.
So, my two cents is, I'm very much looking forward to this effort if we move forward. My department works every year with a number of interns, and I can tell you what that does to our organization or for our organization. It re-energizes. It helps staff see things in a different way. It introduces ideas that we don't generate, that come at us from left field sometimes, and it inspires creativity. field sometimes, and it inspires creativity. So for my part, that's going to be the chief value that my organization gets out of a partnership with the students. It's the creativity, it's the energy, it's the second look, it's a new look that will inspire staff to sometimes head in a completely different direction. To me, that's value added.
Other questions?
I worked in a situation where people were more or less assigned to me, and sometimes they were, oh, I found that they were sneaking down to the local tavern. This won't happen here, I know.
I didn't realize it was a tavern.
Maybe it was you.
Think that's where I went astray?
Which tavern, which tavern is close to the Bureau of Law?
Well, it used to be called the Tomcat.
Oh.
Yeah.
I delivered CO2 to it.
It's gone now.
The Deckin wasn't far, yeah. So, Bob, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I'll just say that some of the projects, three that came out of the Planning Division, one was the Buildable Lands Inventory, and it sounds like maybe that's not the best use of time for that particular project. But there's a couple of others that we're proposing, and one of them, we got direction from the Landmarks Advisory Commission to really work towards providing more information to the public, making the historic files and resources that we have in the city more available. And we're also in the middle of transitioning into a much more electronic format with our files and moving into different software systems. And so one of the things we've been thinking about is how to integrate, for example, our mapping GIS system with our historic files, and maybe getting that information out to the public in a way that's very accessible and user-friendly. So we had this kind of idea, but we're not really sure how to put it all together. And I think that, as an example project, if the UVO program matched up with that, that would be, in my mind, a really good kind of a project, because we could find out all kinds of different ideas and ways of thinking about communication, about mapping, about historic preservation in a way that would sort of tell that story about the history of Albany, provide actual resources that folks in the community need when they're looking at their historic preservation permits, to be able to use that information in their applications. And it would make it all sort of available electronically. How that all happens, me and my staff don't have the expertise, but there's the idea there, and I think that we could turn to the UVO to kind of put that together. So that's an example, in my mind, of how we have a project that we'd like to accomplish. We have the, sort of, some of the resources here in the city to do it, but it would be really great to get that input from professional faculty and students on how the best way to put that together. So that's kind of an example of why I think this was a program at least worth presenting to you for your consideration.
I think that would be very valuable to have. And if you think about, for the amount of cost, we would be getting a really, a large amount of service and additional, you know, time with smaller amount of time from staff just on that project alone. So I think that'd be a big benefit. So, yeah. And then Jeff, Rich, then Jeff?
The term out of the mouths of babes is not lost on me. Thinking about things differently is something I do. Sometimes it is a problem, because you, well, I have a story about that I won't go into. I think we're about a year out. I can see where there'd be some things that would be of great value. I also, there's a nagging in the back of my head saying, "Well, we have people that don't have experience going to give us ideas." Generally, ideas come from people who have a little bit of experience and a little bit of something else. It's been my experience, at least. Is this a program that happens every year?
It does.
It's my, my feel that it's about a year out, from my perspective.
I can say something as well, that it would, if we decide to work together on this, it wouldn't start until fall. So we're...
That wasn't my thought. My thought was, what are the projects that, you know, if you see a couple of good things, and you recognize a couple of good things, that's a couple out of five or six or eight or whatever. A year gives us a couple and a couple more that staff can then think about in the process. I have no idea whether or not, whether or not we would be considered the year after or whatever, but just my input for whatever it's worth.
Jeff?
I was just going to follow up on the previous question and speak to the project on this list that's, that I had put on here now.
Excuse me?
Could you use the microphone? I can't hear you.
Says not to touch it, but I'll break the rules. So I was just going to speak to my project that's on this, on this list of funded projects, and that's the Development Resource Center and IT Services Space Planning, and obviously Jorge's a component of this as well. But for this project, it is really ideas that are being delivered. This is something that's been in our, in our budget through three different work groups for the last couple of years, and we just haven't been able to move forward. And it's trying to move forward with the concept of bringing the two departments, the Public Works Engineering and Community Development Department together, moving towards a shared counter that we can operate more like a Development Resource Center that you see other communities moving to, and an opportunity to leverage a lot of the technology investments that we've made in our different permitting programs and our plan review programs, and incorporating that into our front counter area, and recognizing some efficiencies in how we manage staff to come to the counter. So this, the, I think we would, for my, for my one project here, I think we would get better, wide-ranging ideas and opportunities to consider to move forward to an actual formal design for a layout than we would get by using an architectural firm. So for my project, at least, I think we would get a better product at a lesser cost. Any consultant we hire, there's a lot of hand-holding that goes on. If you don't, you don't get a good product. So again, I'm just speaking to my one project, but that's what was envisioned for that one.
Dick and then Bill?
So are we talking about picking one of these projects?
You don't know which ones?
I don't know how many.
I think you have in front of you, in your packet, there's a list of probably 25 or so potential projects that staff has identified that would, that would be proposed. The spreadsheet you have in front of you are, is a list of those where staff has identified existing funding sources. If, for example, the UVO projects came in less than what we're sort of putting on there as a not-to-exceed amount, then some of these other projects would be on the table for consideration. I think actually, all of them would be on the table for consideration in terms of partnering with the UVO, because they're all projects that have been identified by staff as those that are important to their individual departments and things that they're wanting to move forward.
Bob, just, on our spreadsheet, we have an addition error. I think there's, I think that total's $223,000, not $203,000.
Correct. Bill?
Well, I just wanted to make a motion to go ahead and direct staff to enter into an agreement with the University of Oregon for their Sustainable City Year program.
Even though, as UVO, I would gladly second. I'm a Beaver, by the way.
As am I, so that's fine.
A lot of us here are, so, yeah.
No, I think that's a great idea.
Yep, I do, too. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, Lloyd?
I looked at this the other day. I was rather hesitant. I still have some concern. But seeing Skeet in the back of the room reminded me of 30 years ago, when we worked with Skeet and the students from Lynn Benton, when we were working on the wastewater facilities in Corvallis. We probably gained as much from them as they gained from us. And it's not, not just the students we're getting the input from. We got a lot of input from Skeet. We'll get a lot of input from the professors. You know, they have a few more whiskers than some of the students do. Didn't always agree with the things we heard from Skeet, but he challenged us. And to the extent that that challenge brought us a better facility, it was worth that effort. So, well, I'm a lot like Courtney. I want to know where those dollars are going, and what the purpose is, and how many hours are in there, and what's the scope of service. And I want to know what those tangibles and payoffs are. But I also realized, having been staff, that that stack of we-never-get-to pile keeps getting bigger and bigger, because we, as council, keep giving them different directions. And we ask them to prioritize this, but rarely do we ask them, if we do that, what drops off the end of the table. When I look at the scope of the projects here, a lot of them will have direct impacts, I think. Some of them will have long-term impacts. For one that might have a long-term, it's developed our concept for our walking paths along the canal and the Thurston ditch, if you will. You know, we probably won't get to that for a while, but the conceptual items will be. And just as with Courtney's library, when we have the funding to move forward with that, we pull that back up, and that's our starting point. You know, I'm willing to take that risk.
Okay, all right, Bessie?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation, because I was really hesitant, you know, I think like a lot of the rest of them. I like the scope of having fewer projects to start with. At least we have some sort of an idea. But with what Bob had said about not knowing exactly how to get the integration done with the mapping and everything like that, I know what it's like to get the fresh minds, the younger ideas. They just seem to be more into it than some of, you know, well, us older folk, okay? Because they just, that's what they're growing up with. That's what they're learning. And there's a couple of things here that I think we've already, I mean, like the Buildable Lands Inventory, I thought we had already started on that, and maybe it was one of those things that was kind of pushed, pushed back. I'm not sure. Well, we did something with like a regional, you know, the shovel-ready and all this stuff, and I don't know where that, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, it's a, it's a different project. That was a, that was a regional program to help us deal with wetland mitigation.
Yeah, and so...
That's changed.
An inventory of existing industrial and residential and so forth.
Right, so, you know, I, like I said, I was hesitant, but I liked the presentation. I liked the idea of, is it Courtney? Is it, yeah. Well, like you said, you know, you're honest. You're, you know, sometimes you say, I mean, you say it like it is, and I like that. And so I was hesitant, but I, I too think I'd like to take a chance on it. I think it's something that we could, staff could learn. And like you said, it drives people. It makes, you know, I mean, you can, we can sit in our laurels forever, but if you have someone new pushing you, it's amazing what can get done. So I think I'd be willing to give it a try.
Editorial comment on the Buildable Lands Inventory, if that becomes one of the elements. You know, we've often talked here at the diocese that, given new state regulations from the time we first adopted land use planning, when we got our first list of buildable lands, we weren't excluding properties for wetlands. Now we're excluding, so our buildable lands inventory is diminished. The question is, so what's that do to our holding capacity? If done properly, this thing would help us define and give us some ammunition to go to the legislature to talk about modification of our land use concepts in Oregon. Because if you're going to really honor land use and protect farm and forest, you got to concentrate in urban growth boundaries. But if you keep excluding lands and urban growth boundaries, you can't meet both objectives at the same time. And I think the people coming with that message has to be more than just a few people on this diocese or within our individual communities. It needs to be a theme that's carried out and coming with some credibility outside of the scope of a direct response to a community. That may help.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, just the one. All right, that married. Motion carried. So, thank you so much. Thank you for coming up, and drive safely going home. So, thank you. Looking forward to working with you. Yeah, thanks.
It was intentional.
Okay, council next is Business from the Public. Anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Yes, Skeet?
Skeet Arasmith. Last name is spelled A-R-A-S-M-I-T-H, 160 Southeast 25th Street here in Albany. I want to talk to you for a few minutes about a thing I call budget creep. And it's an area I'm familiar with, because I spent 20 years being part of the problem, and then I spent another 20 years trying to rectify the problem. And I'm not going to take a lot of time. I've got a written document I'll leave with you, and if you want to do some more discussion at a work session, I'll be available to do that. I know you're right in the middle of budgeting process, but the budgeting process really started last September, October, or maybe in August for some folks. And in other studies I've looked at and things I've done, you find that somewhere between 20 and 25% of some people's time within any given department is spent through the year on dealing with the budgets. And when we get to this point in it, it's usually pretty well baked into the cake. I know you're going to do the Budget Committee, but by the time we get there, the presentations we make have already been, you know, through the wringer. So having been a department head and a supervisor and the like in both, you know, Water District, a city, and then in a community college, here's what I know happens, okay? And I have not looked in every department here, but I've worked with a number of communities over the last 40 years to know that this is pretty normal. I'm the head of a department, and it's budget time. My first obligation to myself is to look around and say, "How many people do I have who report to me?" So I take that, those people and their salaries, and that goes at the top of the page. And then I'm going to add to that whatever income might be increased based on contracts that are going on. Then I'm going to look at my past year's costs on fixed things and put that down. And then we come to the thing that's really important to all of us, and that's, what else is it we'd all like to do, and what new things would we like to buy, and what things, what other things can we be doing where we utilize people, and do we need more staff and all of that? More equipment, what grants are available? And over the years, I had lots of difficulties with some councils I worked with up in Alaska, where I would say to them, "Listen, I know it's free money to build that thing, but you can't afford to take it, because you don't have a way to operate it, maintain it, or replace it when it's wore out." So grant money is not always a good idea. So what usually happens when we do this? We got this long list, we come up with a bottom line and go, "Okay, there's the amount of money that we think it's going to take next year." The income is relatively fixed for most local governments. I mean, it's, you know, cess tax, you know, cess rates and all those pieces that go into the taxes. So what do I do to get these new things done that I didn't have the money for, because I can't just increase my fees? And so one of the things I can do is I can recommend we increase tax rates on some things. We can look at fee increases. We can reduce some costs by this crazy phenomena called deferred maintenance. We can't defer maintenance. I mean, if deferred maintenance would be like, "Supposed to change the oil every 3,000 miles, so I don't do it at 3,000, but I wait till 6,000 and change it twice." That's deferred maintenance. Either we do maintenance, or we don't do it. And typically, we don't do it because it's hidden. The problem with that, then, is things deteriorate over time. Or we can say, "Well, I've got this sinking fund for some equipment that we might buy in the future, but I need that for operating expenses, so I'll siphon out of that with the hopes that someday I'll be able to pay that back," which very seldom happens. the hopes that someday I'll be able to pay that back, which very seldom happens. And so, so the result is, we continually look for how to increase fees and taxes in order to pay for these things that I wanted to do that were good ideas. I mean, we're not talking about staff coming up with harebrained ideas. It's like, these are really good things and they would benefit some people, and so we ought to do them. There is another way, okay? And the other way has to do with determining what are the true costs of doing what it is we believe we really ought to be doing, okay? And if the hour wasn't a quarter to nine, I would take a little more time and talk about that. But I'll, I'll leave this document with you, and if you want to talk about it more in depth, I'd be glad to come back at a work session and, and kick that around, unless there's questions of me now.
Questions?
Sounds good. Thank you.
So Skeet, you still, Skeet, I'm sorry, you still live on 25th? Because I thought I heard you built a new house in Millersburg.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, yeah.
Lots of property, but haven't built yet.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, all right, thank.
That summer's not bad.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, not seeing anyone. Okay, so the attorney, you have a ordinance that we revised the agenda for?
An ordinance directing the correction of a scrivener's error and ordinance number 5864 and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance should be read a second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance directing the correction of a scrivener's error and ordinance number 5864 and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carried. Okay, next we have adoption of resolutions, and this one, the first one would be for extended property tax abatement agreement for Trieco LLC in the South Sennium Enterprise Zone. This is on page 54 as a resolution. And did you have any questions of John on this?
I didn't do my homework, I apologize. Who are they, where are they, and what do they do?
Okay, John, would you like to come forward, please?
Yeah.
Or do you know?
I'll let John. He's waited this long, we need to give him a moment.
Yeah.
John Pascone, 435 West First Avenue with Albany Millersburg Economic Development Corporation. Ray, you didn't do your homework? Trieco is a company, it's a startup company, they leased space on Ferry Street, which was absorbent technology. They're doing a super absorbent polymer without the ugly chemicals that absorbent technology used, and so they leased that property effective January 1st. They hope to have 20 people in a couple of years. Wes and Kate and I have worked with them for a while. They were very impressed. The city staff went there and looked over the facility with them, and I'm working with them on billing permits and such, and they're.
So they actually purchased the intellectual property and the assets of absorbent technologies?
Not the, not the intellectual property, they have a different intellectual property, but they're leasing the assets and will be adding some of their own equipment to it.
Okay, so right now they have zero employees, according to this.
Well, they have some people probably working as volunteers, but they have some investors. But they leased the property, so they, they leased, January 1st, they started leasing the property, and they're going to clean it up and fix it up.
Any timeframe on when they'd have a product on the market? Have they indicated?
They hope sometime this year, they hope to have six employees this year and be, be rolling.
Okay. All right, there's resolution on page 54.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, next is approving the transferred, transfer of road jurisdiction from Benton County to the City of Albany. This is on page 57 to 68, and there's a resolution on page 58. Questions, council?
Move for adoption of the resolution?
Second.
Second.
All right, and discussion?
Just for Jeff, these are all in accordance with our discussion earlier in the year with transfer with Benton County?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is you have a really large consent calendar, one item.
Move for the adoption.
Consent calendar?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried again. And next is a word of bid.
Your honor, I need to declare a conflict of interest as I am the low responsive contractor, so I will recuse myself from any discussion or voting on this.
And I am so looking forward to this project too, so I'm glad that.
Geez, well, seeing as how it's him, maybe we shouldn't vote.
Yeah, I'm glad that EC's going to be working on the project.
Doesn't have any welders included in it.
Yeah. Okay, so this would be for awarding a bid, and this would be to EC Company of Albany in the amount of $455,532 for traffic signals.
I would move that we award the bid. One of the reasons is because they came well under the engineer's bid.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all right. And, you know, I've always been curious though, when we did the Marion Street project, I remember that it was supposed to have put in the road conduit for future traffic signal. Has it ever done, or since that was back in 98 project, it was obsolete by now?
I did not work here at that time, so I have no idea.
I strictly remembered, I said, you know what, if we're going to be digging up that road on 34th Street, that was from our street bond, actually, the street bond project.
Oh, when we did 34th?
Let's put, make sure the conduit's in, so, but yeah.
I don't recall. I just checked with the city attorney, I, I am able to comment, yes, that conduit's in there.
Oh, it is, okay, it's done. Well, see, cost savings.
I mean, he did the work so he would know what the status was.
That's why we got it cheaper. We saved some money that way. Yeah, all right, well, thank, thank you, Bill. Okay, and we have a motion on the table, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is page 77, and this is city, appointments, city boards, commissions, committees, and we just have two.
Move the requested action.
Second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is a report from our Mr. Librarian in the back. Hello, yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I don't understand questions. Basically, the context for this, these reclassifications is, since we moved into the new facility, we've had about a 40 percent staff turnover, a lot of retirements, people moving, and this is an attempt to just kind of add a little shape to who's in what seat doing what. There are some folks, you know, need to be bumped up to, for their job duties to match, match these classifications, and there are a couple of folks I reference who are in the lower library aid slots that have, one was a library assistant with us, moved away and came back, and another has a professional library degree. We like to hire folks part-time, entry level, and train them, get to know them, and should positions open up, take advantage of their professional training, so that, that's the fourth item. You may know nothing about the library or these positions or what we do, so if you have any questions.
Okay, questions, Ben?
Question in the budget impact, you said under $10,000, is that per year or for the balance of this fiscal year?
That's starting February 1st.
Through end of June, so next year, it would be a multiple of that.
It would, right.
We prorate it up.
A bit.
Or more than double.
Well, 10, 10 is very generous in our sort of way we work with our numbers on, the number is really closer to 7, just rounded it up, but there are other retirements, we, for instance, in May, someone will retire when we replace that person. That should be at a saving of $12,000 in next year's budget, so there's still, it's hard to say.
So your total FTEs don't change?
Correct.
Just as a credit, I mean, Ed doesn't need a plug from me on this, but, you know, I think the library's really done a commendable job of basically maintaining the same staffing level that we had at a 17,000 square foot facility, now running a 42,000 square foot facility with substantially greater numbers of people walking through the front door. And, you know, and I, I say this, I admit I have a bias, it's on the table, you all know it, I love the library, I go there a lot, I use its services, and so I'm in a good position, I think, at least in as good a position as any other patron of the library in Albany to say, you know, they do really good work, and I feel very privileged that we have what I think is an outstanding staff there, and I, I think Ed has done a great job of, you know, balancing and making adjustments as adjustments have been needed, changing staff in response to retirements and other changes in his organization, and, you know, he's just been a good manager there.
Do they have the Curious George books?
Uh, yes, they do. Although.
I really enjoyed, yeah, your note, and also the Curious George books years ago.
They're, they're classics.
Kids were about 40 years younger.
They are classics.
Yeah, and I just want to say that the library does such a good job also of working with like LBCC and those, and having different classes in the different rooms, and, and I know it's more traffic and, and having a, having a little granddaughter with us and stuff, we use it more now than we ever did because of the, you know, the kids part and also the toddler classes and things like that, you know, it's just, it's nice to have a place where these kids can go. And I understand the last toddler class was like 29 kids came to Storytime for like a 20-minute story.
Kind of very successful new, new program.
It's great, yes, very good.
In collaboration with LP, yeah.
So with that, I would move that we authorize the reclassification of the positions in the library.
Just a, anecdotal kudos, my wife was down there the other day, and they happened
to have a little bit of a computer glitch, and they had to resort to checking out books by hand, and that brought back good memories from her, since she's a certified librarian from many, many years ago. She's not on this list, though. That's true. Thankfully.
Uh huh.
They're going to do decimals, Susan.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Good night.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next is the audit report.
Last week, we had the annual audit report, audit committee meeting, and some of you may remember that a year ago, the city switched over to a new system to do all of the accounting rather than relying on a generation-old Excel program, starting to get a little crusty and crusty around the edges. And even with the learning curve with that, city staff came through with an absolute clean bill of health, wonderful audit report. And the only thing that came up, and I don't know if Stewart wants to address it, is in future years down the road, and we kind of lightly touched on it just recently, was the federal standards, Gatsby Rule 68, and how that potentially is going to affect future budgets with unfunded mandated costs involved in the budget being required to be shown up, but it won't affect anything this year. But we got a great clean bill of health, and everybody was quite happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, and since I apologize I couldn't make that meeting, had a family emergency, but how did it go for the hotel audits this time?
Yeah, each year we conduct an audit of transient lodging tax of hotels in the community, and each year we, we audit three or four hotels. In the current year, there were four hotels that were audited, three of the four, well, let's see, first of all, let me describe, two of the three had errors in their reporting, one we're still trying to reconcile. The one that we're trying to reconcile changed managers about a year ago, and a year ago, they were scheduled to be audited, and because of the change in management, we elected to defer the year. And it doesn't appear that we're on the same page yet on identifying what their monthly revenue number is that should be reported as room tax, for room tax purposes. So it's, in each year, it's been a worthwhile exercise, and we found errors at times that were scrivener's errors, where we just made a correction on the next billing. This is the first time, this is the one that's been most substantial, where we have not yet reached a number that we can identify to match on the hotel's reports with the city reports, so we'll still pursue that and get it reconciled.
And there was one that turns out that they've been overpaying.
And that's the one I'm referring to. And, and actually, where is that from the audit committee meeting is, they pretty much said they felt they were doing it right, and we still feel they're overpaying. So we haven't identified, like I say, the number that we're differing on is what their, their monthly report indicates a revenue to the hotel for that month, and that's the number we're calculating the room tax on. There's some, for, and I think, I know the reason is they're grossing that, that amount up and then reducing it back down to get to the tax number, and it's, it shouldn't be grossed up, we should just use that number, and it should flow right from their monthly report onto the report they submit to the city, so I think we'll.
Be until we figure that out.
Yeah, so it's, for the past six months, which were the months that were audited, yeah, it's about $3,600 that appears was overpaid. So over a year, it would be about double that, but, so we'll make sure we get it resolved.
Yeah, well, thank you, Stuart.
It's got to be a case where being right is more important than saving money, apparently.
Yeah, that's great.
I was hoping it'd be the other way.
The, the reason there's some ongoing discussion is because the hotels often, particularly the smaller hotels, contract with a third party to administer their, their receipts and their calculation of tax. And jurisdictions do approach some of that differently, and so I think it's, it's a communication between the third party, the hotel and the city, that's been, that we still need to make sure it's working smoothly.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you, Stuart, so. Okay, there's no, is there action on this? We just need a motion accept the audit report.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next, business from the council. So Bessie, anything?
Just one thing.
Oh, wait, you know what? Oh, no, that's right, it's before the city managers report, yeah.
Just one thing, I've had a couple people tell me that when they are watching on TV that, and Courtney was a good example tonight, we've got to have a portable mic there so that they can use it. I mean, there's no, we've got them, and so we've got to have them out there, because they said they can hear the main speaker, but then anybody talking aside or, or doing a PowerPoint or something like that, it's just mumbled, they can't hear it. And so if we could do that, I think it'd save, you know, I mean, it'd just make it more understandable, because we don't want them to miss a word that we say.
Yeah.
Or that they say, excuse me. But that's all, it was just brought to my attention, so.
We tried the cable thing.
All right, Bill?
All right.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, I want to second what Bessie said, that some of us don't care very well. I had a hard time following their, their discussion. So, and I think if we could follow Hasso's suggestion of having just a bigger table here, so if you have three or four people, they can sit at that table and share a mic rather than kind of screeching around the edge and, and having a hard time being part of the discussion.
Okay, is that it? All right, Rich?
That same subject. The design of said table, has that been worked on? I know you guys tried some different things.
Yeah, we actually had a table here, you may recall. We'd ordered one and it came in damaged, and we decided, after looking at it, we were kind of glad because it, we didn't feel it. kind of glad, because it, we didn't feel it really worked very well anyway.
That's good.
We can certainly put a table out there. It turned out to be quite a bit more expensive than I think any of us had when we discussed it, but sure, we can do it.
My thought there is, we probably have some Oregon white oak available from trees, and we probably have some people who could put something together if we had a design.
Okay.
I mean, a bigger table is, I think, pretty easy to do.
Sure, it is. It's not, it's not a question of...
Minimal amount.
Not having the technology, I think it's just a question of how much we were willing to spend, and we can do it. One of the keys is that I know we've had a lot of interest in making sure whatever we put there is, not necessarily matches, but is at least consistent with the decor and the rest of the council chamber, and so I'm sure we can come up with something.
I'm a person pretty adamant about that. When you have a certain building and an architectural design is what you add to it, should always be matching that architectural design.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you did add extensions to that, you know, just make sure it's the right type of finish, right type of wood.
Just make a new one.
So, yeah, however it's done, to me, it needs to be that, that same finish.
Jeff is eerily volunteering for it.
Yeah.
Oh, just get a banknote.
Heinrich, right? Jeff Heinrich is doing it.
Speaking of our design, I think we have a ceiling leak.
Must be a woodworker in the bleeder.
Notice that?
Well, you know, the interesting thing is, is that Counselor Colburn mentioned that same issue, and of course, what's drawn our attention to that is the fact that we've had these sort of fanciful things hanging from the ceiling that are soon to come down. The truth is, I think those stains have been up there a long time, because the leak was fixed.
Oh, that one back, see that one back in the corner?
Yeah, it's been there for a long time.
That big?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
It's not new.
Those big stains on the ceiling, I had not noticed those.
Well, there's another one there.
Yeah.
Two or three or four. The blessings of a flat roof.
I noticed it the other day when I had a meeting or something in the back, and I thought, I don't remember seeing it, but...
Supposedly, it's, well, my recollection is I've seen stains there before, but we will get on it.
Well, at the very least, we can paint it.
Yeah.
You don't defer maintenance.
Yeah, okay. Ray, did you have anything?
No.
Kate Floyd?
Nope.
Nope. And I didn't, so Wes, we have your report on your agreement.
Right, and the council, I think, has a copy of the proposed contract. I borrowed a little bit of it from the school district form and some of the elements of it. I indicated in my initial report to you that the savings would be about $15,000 a year if I had chosen to just work until, in regular status until the end of fiscal year 2017. It's actually about $18,000 is the city's contribution to purse, which you would save by doing this. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, sir, and do you need a motion to this?
Could it twist his arm to stay longer?
Can we actually write the date and extend it out, and then you can?
Well, I, you know, I'm sure much rather it go that way than the other ways.
Yeah.
Good through, good through the end of the week.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, counsel?
I move we authorize the mayor to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Okay, and there was a second? All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, same sign? Okay, all right. Might just add a longer date on that.
And if I could just say one thing, I need to get this off my chest in response to the comments about the budget. I mean, I think Skeet raised a lot of valid points, there's a lot of truth to what Mr. Aerosmith was saying about, you know, how budgeting can happen in a city. That isn't how we have budgeted, though, however, in this city, and I think most of the council is aware of that, but several years ago, we made a decision here to ensure that our revenues and our expenditures stayed in balance, so that it was not a case of just automatically incrementally increasing what people got. And in fact, we made some absolute reductions, and there've been some public allegations that that's not the case, and I think Counselor Kupczynski has pointed some of those out, but as Stuart can attest, what we did several years ago is we said, look, this is how much money we have. And so what department directors, rather than saying, sitting down each year, and I know Counselor Collins doesn't necessarily agree with this philosophy, but what we said is, rather than saying, how much do we, you know, he described how he would sit down at the beginning of the year saying, well, how much have I got, and how much more do I need? We said, this is how much you're going to get, and it was a number less than what they felt they needed. And we've asked people to fit their budgets within those amount now for several years, and it's put a real squeeze, to the extent that we've, we're now, you know, we had, our peak employment was 428 employees back in, I think, 2008, and we're currently at like 392, which is up a little bit from the, I think we were at 388 a couple of years ago. So the point is, is that it isn't a case of budget creep in the sense of adding more resources every year, or everybody just getting an increment more every year. It's been an exercise in trying to fit the goals of the council and the goals of the strategic plan into the amount of resources that we've been granted by our taxpayers, and that's a very different approach than the one that you heard described tonight.
Yes.
Jeff Schiff didn't, so is Skeet going to pass down, pass some information down to us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Also, Floyd reminded me, too, that I had put on the dais in front of everyone tonight just a very rough schedule of some of the issues surrounding a search for a new city manager. And, you know, there's some decisions that you need to make, I don't think there's any urgency to getting those decisions made, but one is, you know, whether you want to do the recruitment yourself or have it done in-house with existing staff, whether you would want to go to a professional executive search firm. You can do that, sort of a light version of that, the Local Government Personnel Institute offers those, offers those services, too, but I think it's sort of at a lower level, lower cost than what an executive search firm would cost. The prices vary pretty widely, I put 25,000 to 50,000, and apparently, it can go quite a bit higher than that if you're, you know, depending on what it is that you ask the consultant to do. And so those are things I think you, as a council, might want to be thinking about in sometime here in the next couple of months. You had asked me to kind of put this together, and I think sometime here in the next couple of months, we'll put it back on the agenda for council discussion and consideration at a work session where you can talk about, you know, what you want to look at, are you satisfied with the current job description, for example? Some of these things you might, if you choose to go with a professional consultant, when you're talking about issues like compensation, you would probably want to talk with your consultant about what's the appropriate level of compensation for a city of this size, because they're going to give you probably a more objective answer than you're going to find elsewhere. But these are just some issues to be thinking about and a time schedule to be thinking about, and we'll try and get it back to you here within the next month or so to discuss in greater detail.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay, is that it? Any staff have anything else? So, okay. We have a work session February 8th, and we have regular session February 10th, and with that, we're adjourned.